First, let me welcome you all to the administrative conference meeting here today, the Shreveport City Council. We're calling the meeting to order now, and I'm gonna ask the councilman John Nicholson to give the invocation, and councilman Butcher will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Will you please stand?
God of power and might, wisdom and justice, through you authority is rightly administered, laws are enacted, and judgment is decreed. Assist with your spirit of counsel and fortitude the leaders of this city. May they always seek the ways of righteousness, justice, and mercy. Grant that they may be enabled by your powerful protection to lead our city with honesty and integrity. We ask this through Christ our Lord. Amen.
Amen.
Please face at the flag and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, will you please call the order?
Councilman Bradford.
President.
Councilwoman Fuller.
President.
Councilman Nicholson.
Present.
Councilman Butcher.
Here.
Councilman Flory.
Here.
Councilman Green.
I'm here.
And Councilman Baldwin.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Tomorrow, with great excitement, I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the previous conference of May, February 10th of 2020, and the city council meeting of Tuesday, February 11th of 2020. Does any council member at this time have any words, recognitions, distinguished guests not to exceed 15 minutes?
I do, I do.
Recognize, Councilwoman Fuller.
Thank you, Chair. I would like to recognize Mr. Austin Dwarf. You can approach the podium now.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chairman. Michael Austin Dwarf, 6309 Time Police, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71106. I come in front of the council this afternoon primarily as a volunteer. I represent the Red River Rebel Arts Festival and Foundation as the most immediate board president. As everybody knows, we have been approached with some significant changes to our multi-year contract with the city of Shreveport regarding services that are provided not only by the Red River Rebel, but some of our subsidiaries at Festival Plaza and the Depot Grounds. I am here primarily for one purpose today, and that is to implore the council to, I guess, defray or delay voting on the proposed changes that were presented to us at the end of January so that we can avoid any significant impact on programming for our festival that takes place in September, as well as other festivals throughout the year that we produce. I did bring some additional information that might be of value, since I know we are talking about treating things equally. Some of the things about the Red River Rebel that the council may or may not be privy to understanding is that we are directly responsible for the education of, in excess of 15,000 regional pre-kindergarten, kindergarten, and elementary school students every year. We have an estimated annual economic impact of more than $7 million per the Rose Recent Economic Impact Study. We have paid more than $12 million in commissions to local nonprofits over the past 10 years. Some of the local nonprofits or other schools and organizations that use the Red River Rebel as their primary fundraising means every year. Additionally, we have also paid more than $2.3 million in security over the past 10 years, including annually about $60,000 to $70,000 directly to Shreveport police officers to man our event. Additionally, over the past 10 years, in excess of half a million dollars has been paid in city over employee overtime. Some of the things that I believe are of utmost importance to us is not impacting the program so that we can't continue to provide a festival that we know the city loves and that the citizens of Shreveport love as well. So what I would ask again is that you give, you know, due consideration to at least delaying and working in partnerships so that we can communicate more effectively with council, with SPAR, in order to put forth a plan for multi-years going forward that is going to have the least impact on the programming that the Rebel provides. Any questions?
Any questions?
And I would have, I guess, one closing remark is that all of the financials for the Red River Rebel are available for past years at the Louisiana Legislative Auditor's website. All of our financials are on record.
Let me ask one question, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Councilman Bradford.
You gave a very detailed description of what you do and how you provide opportunities for various nonprofits. How do you feel the legislation that you, as before, is gonna affect you? I don't, I don't see, I don't see the scope of what you feel.
The indirect, the indirect cost that we have, we have a lot of in-kind, and we actually view the city as an invaluable resource. As Ms. Regal and as a lot of others have alluded to, the city cannot, the Rebel cannot put on its events without SPAR support. Changing some of the services and in-kind donations that we have had over the years are gonna produce hard costs directly to the Rebel that we will have to pay out of pocket, and that directly impacts the amount of programming that we are able to provide to students.
What do the vendors, what, what, what are they responsible for to the Rebel? What, you charge them a percentage of what they do for coming and giving them space?
As far as like food and art, food and art vendors?
Those that sell food and those kind of things.
Those that sell food? The Rebel does take in commissions that are also paid back to those organizations, and we also pay the city revenue, our sales tax revenue, on a lot of those vendors.
Okay. But I'm saying, do they, you charge them a fee, and what percentage is that fee?
Yeah, they, they are charged typically in artist booth fee in order to come and provide their services available and sell their, sell their art supplies.
Okay. And what you're, what you're, what you're charging them, you feel is adequate, or you think that, that there's opportunity to look at adjusting that fee as well?
I believe that is also an additional thing. I mean, we are constantly exploring new, new ways to improve the, the programming for the event, as well as attracting new funding that will enable us to go out and get new, new programming.
Okay. And I think we're gonna consider your request, but my point is simply what Ms. Regal gave us on the last meeting in that the city ability to do what we've done five, 10 years ago is not, is not affordable at this point. And adjustments and modifications and provisions to, to adjust to that has to be made, and we're just at a point where we, we have to be prudent in, in what we do, and, and we're, you know, we don't wanna cause no hardship on anybody, but at the same time, we need to do what's in the best interest of the city in applying our financial capacity.
Completely understand that, Councilman Bradford, and I certainly do appreciate and we respect the position the city is in. That is why we are merely asking for a, a simple delay in putting these effects that are going to affect us for multi-years down the road. Completely understand the position the city is in, and we're willing to accommodate some of those changes.
We're gonna work together, I think.
I agree.
Ms. Fuller?
Thank you, Chair. I think that anyone about my age and the mayor's age, like, appreciates the Rebel and has like some very, very strong attachment to it, and I appreciate the quality of life even that it is. But when we talk about where the city is tightening our belts and the changes that we're making that are going to affect all of our different events that we have cooperative endeavor agreements with, I think that it would be in our best interest to lay it all out there to see what our return on investment truly is, excuse me, especially if we're going to look at how we're considering the Rebel historically. So I think we all know that this is an, an event that's been around since 1976, that the main, the major stakeholder, and it was the Junior League, as a gift, a bicentennial gift to the city. A lot of us grew up with it, see it as a rite of passage to have been, to participate with it. You got your sand art, you got your face painted, you know, you got your, you got your, your funnel cake and your muffuletta pizza. But when we talk about the arts, the field trips, all of those impacts, we also have to look at the amount of cash that's being put down on it by the city as well as the in-kind. So my request is gonna be that if we are able to come to an agreement to give one full year to evaluate as far as some of the issues with like the leasing, the rental, that we also audit, that the internal audit office of the city council will lay everything out so we can look at what our true return on investment actually is, and make sure that we're adjusting in the right ways to make sure everything is equitable.
Completely understand with that. I would say that one of the things that I want to remind everybody is Festival Plaza did not exist 30 years ago. It was actually built for Holiday and Dixie, Mudbug Madness, and the Red River Rebel. The train depot that we occupy our offices is listed on all Shreveport material as the permanent offices for the Red River Rebel because we manage and put on so many events down there. I, I completely agree, we're willing to work with the city in whatever way actionable that we can do to help, I guess, come to a meaningful and partnership going forward.
Right. Thank you. Thanks, Chair.
Okay. Mr. Bowman, you have anything?
No, sir.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, excuse me. Councilman Bradford?
Yeah, I, no, I'm not actually.
Okay.
I, I just wanted to recognize.
Yes.
I just wanted to recognize Ms. Tabitha Taylor, who is present with us today, and she is a great worker for autism, and welcome.
Thank you.
Okay. The other councilmen. Okay. Mayor Perkins, you have anything?
I have no comments today, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Green? Place to be.
Anybody have anything?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I would just like to note that tomorrow at 1:30, we're gonna have an infrastructure meeting at the, behind us here, not an infrastructure, I'm sorry, a property standards meeting. We just got finished with infrastructure. A property standards meeting in the conference room behind here. And I just, I wanted everybody to be aware, we're gonna be discussing some pretty major things, I believe. The implementation of the environmental court is one thing we're gonna be talking about. And then I, I know that all of us get the complaints about the burned-up buildings, and I know Mrs. Fuller's got several in her district, so we're gonna discuss that as well. So I'd like for everybody to join us if they could.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody? Councilman Bradford, I'm sorry, Councilman Nicholson, you were next on the board. I, I just had a comment to say to Councilman Bradford. You go ahead.
Mr. Green, I dropped one of my children off this weekend at LSU Medical School for a science fair event, and I drove by the burned-up Long John Silver. And this may not be a question for Mr. Green, I don't know where that is, but, but are we any closer to having that torn down or repaired than we were before the, into last year?
No, sir. I believe everything has to be basically put over under 38.5, and we have to deal with that in, in another way. So, but I'll bring you better details tomorrow to the meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
You couldn't have told me about that over hot dogs?
I, I could have. We talked about so many things, that was a minor issue, but next time I'll bring it to your attention, Councilwoman Fuller. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Bradford was not at the infrastructure meeting, but I want the committee to know.
Mr. Green, don't leave, please.
I asked him not to leave. But anyway, I kept notes, and I gave him all the data, and it was a very good meeting, and so he'll be up to date, up to speed on it. Yes, Mr. Green?
Mr. Green, and I, I should have spoken to you privately, but I'm gonna say this, and then I'm gonna ask that you would join me on a tour of my district.
Yes, sir.
Last week I took some council members on a bus ride through my district. The negligence in property standards is, was obvious. You know, and we, you know, we, we can't, we can't patrol our districts on a daily, weekly basis. It's just impossible.
Right.
I, I know you got, you got people in the field. I get calls all the time about something in a particular neighborhood, a particular street, and I'm like, if you don't tell me, I won't know it, because I don't, I don't patrol the area. But I think some of your men do patrol the area. But some of the, some of the, some of the areas of my district, and it was embarrassing. And I'm wondering, how, how do, how do those inspectors or others who patrol the areas document needs, issues that need to be, that need to be addressed? And I was gonna ask you, in some areas, I mean, the litter was just outrageous, and I was wondering, do we have a relationship with the sheriff department? I see I'm picking up litter along state highways. Do we, do we have any relationship where we can get them to pick up litter within the city? Do you know of any?
No, sir.
There's no, there's no?
When you say litter, what exactly?
Uh, I mean, just debris all over the place. I mean, that was one area. I mean, I'm not gonna identify who I took on my bus ride, but I'm gonna say, if they was to start speaking, you know, we, we wouldn't have time to finish the meeting.
Okay.
But I'm just saying, I'm gonna invite you, maybe Thursday or Friday, you and I, and whoever is, is, is signed to my district, I wanna, I wanna take that same route, and I want you to see what, what some of, what I saw and some of the others saw. Okay? Thank you, sir.
Okay. Councilman, at CAF.
Well, I yield.
I'm sorry.
No, I yield to CAF.
I, I was just gonna address Councilman Bradford's question. If you recall during the last budget session, council appropriated some money for Public Works to, to hire contractors to assist us with litter picking, picking up litter along the interstate, and that's going through the purchasing process right now. So hopefully we'll have a report for you all soon on the status of that and, and what the city is able to do to improve that situation.
And I appreciate that, Ms. Fuller, but my, my specific question was the chronic and the negligence of litter and trash and debris in, in the city. I'm not gonna dismiss the responsibility of residents, of citizens who are contributing to this, to this clutter, if you will. But at the same time, we do have a department in place that patrols the city, and should, it should be vigilant of these type of issues, Mayor. And I'm just saying, I, I hope I'm not exaggerating, but I think once I get with the director and we, and we patrol the area, I think, I think he'll understand what I'm saying.
Let me, let me add this to it also. Councilman Butcher is over the Property Standards Committee. We are, we have voted on, or you guys have voted on, a new way of doing things in the city. Right now, it has not been totally implemented. We're in the process of implementing it. In order to truly cite someone, they must have an appeal process. Once we get things in place, then we can fully go and do what it is that we need to do.
Let me be, let me be more clear. Let me be more clear. What I'm, what I'm asking you, and you can tell me later, what I'm asking you is, as your people patrol the city, if they see, if they see areas that are in violation, if they see litter on streets, do they document that, and, and do you set forth a plan to address it?
Okay, you just missed it. Certain things we can address, but until we get that environmental docket, environmental court set up in place, everything cannot be addressed. So we're in the process of getting everything in place. Yes, we can address grass, but say demolitions, a lot of your care premises that fall under the old system, we can still do those things because that money has already been allotted and has gone through the process. But for the new things that we have to cite that owner under the new system, we, we have to get everything in place, Councilman. All I'm telling you is that it's coming. It's coming. We do have something in place.
I think, I think we are, we are busy.
Right.
Okay. Mr. Bowman would have to ask me.
Is there a documented timeline of somebody like, say, must the guy that specified to Queensborough, is there a specified timeline documented for who's over in that area? My inspector, does my inspector have documentation of him being in Queensborough and?
Yes.
Okay, so, and what all he's wrote up?
Yes.
Okay, can I get a copy of that?
Sure.
The past 30, 60 days?
Right, right. You can get that.
And with the appeals process. So when Bradford just mentioned the appeals process, what determines whether or not somebody appeal is accepted or denied?
If that person asks for an appeal, it's accepted.
Okay, so, and the timeline on that? So if, if, and I say that because I've seen like where violations are, and we might ticket a car, might be sticking on a car, whether or not it's in the yard, and it's still there, and it's been there six months ago, and it's still sitting there. So that's why I'm asking.
We don't have that appeal process in place. There's no environmental.
Now, you just missed it, 'cause you just contradicted yourself of what you said. That's, that's why I'm asking.
They can ask for an appeal, but until that judge or that hearing officer is in place, he's not gonna hear it.
Okay.
I mean, you were over that committee.
Well, get me, that's, that's, that's why I'm asking, 'cause I'm still seeing the same violations sitting out there.
We can't address it. We can't do anything.
Why are we out there putting stickers on cars, wasting money on paper or whatever?
We can let them appeal it. I mean, we can't stop them from that.
Okay, I'll just take the.
We, we got to have that person in place.
I just need the documentation on, on the timeline.
Gotcha.
Okay, thank you.
Can I, can I have the floor just, what, I think we're missing here, Councilman Bradford and I made a trip on Friday, and we spent two hours up there riding. And, and I think what he saw, what I'm, first of all, in two hours, we never saw a police car, we never saw a garbage truck, nor a city truck, water department, anybody.
Right.
In two hours, we rode all up there. But what I think he, and as I remember, we discussed, we see this litter on the street. I'm just wondering, do, do your people inspectors send a note to sanitation or whoever?
Public Works.
Public Works, Public Works, and say, hey, this street is in bad shape or something? Do we communicate between departments, is what I'm asking?
Well, yes, we do communicate between departments, but, but understand, if they're going for something specific, a lot of times, it may be there, but it, they may not pay attention to it, but yes, we do communicate between departments.
Okay, thank you very much.
Right.
Yes.
So, Mr. Green, what, what do you think the time, and we're gonna discuss this a little bit more, but since it's been brought up, what is your timeline to get the environmental court up and running?
Well, I mean, that's, a, a person has to be chosen, and that's not up to us.
It's up to the mayor, right? Mayor, you have people in mind?
Yeah, we already have people in mind. I'm working with the timeline with property standards and with the city attorney.
So you think you'll give it to us in the next couple of weeks, maybe to?
Yeah.
That does, does that require confirmation from us, or?
I don't believe so, but I, I don't recall off the top of my head. I'm not sure.
It does?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. So, so really, we're, you know, and it's, it's something that's new, and, but, but I will attest, I rode with Councilman Bradford, but I also rode parts of my district after that, and parts of Councilman Nicholson's district after that, and it's, it's not just the MLK area, but the whole two hours we were up there, I don't think we saw police, city trucks. I, I agree, and we went and set, we went on separate trips, it was Mr. Nicholson and myself on Wednesday, and then Councilman Flory on Friday, but it's a citywide issue, and I guess, I guess what we're trying to get across up here is if, if you've got those inspectors that are out there and they see something, you know, not just to what they're specifically going to, to, to have tunnel vision for those things, but if they see an area that has got a lot of trash or something like that, could they maybe get it over to Sergeant Ray and, and their, their bunch to maybe spend a little bit of time over there to, to kinda try to stop it? Because there were some areas in MLK that, I know a lot of it was because of flooding, because it was raining that day, but those ditches were full of just trash. I mean, you couldn't even see the ditch for areas where all that, that trash had collected. So I guess that, and I'm not trying to speak for my colleagues, but, but what I would like to see is if you have an inspector going to a, an abandoned vehicle, and they see this area that's just bombarded with trash and tires and all that, if they could, if they could communicate with the police department and, and let them start kinda getting out there, and then with Public Works to come pick some of that stuff up, that, I think that's where we're trying to go with that.
Thank you. Okay. Okay, Mr. Park, you have Master Plan Committee Report.
Can, I was just sitting back there listening, and I'd just like to share with the council, it just determines what, what a legislative branch of government is inclined to support. We tried a, a proactive approach in a, in areas outside the city limits of Shreveport to notify all of the entities involved and become much more proactively involved in the planning limits. And I don't know if you've watched the news lately, but sometimes that produces rebellion and uprising. And so I would just share that with you. Sometimes you just really don't know what to do when you're in these positions, because when you do these things, sometimes the, the results are not what you set out to do. You set out with a proactive, positive attitude, but you find yourself having to deal with all type of negativity and all type of problems. But you asked me to give you an update on the master plan, I just wanted to share that with, with you, because I enjoy coming before you all. The master plan, and I was told that I need to smile more, so I'm trying to, to be pleasant, Councilman Green, but you told me I was too moving around so much, so I came and started.
Get them food trucks going.
We are, we are in the final stages of, of setting up our first master plan advisory committee meeting. We have representatives from the city council, representatives from the MPC board, and representatives from the parish commission. This board is gonna be assisting, because we are going back through the master plan presently and looking at all the recommendations that were made. We should have done this a long time ago, but we did some, but we are going back and looking at every recommendation that the consultants made with the master plan, determining what has been done, what needs to be done, and setting up timetables and timelines on when these things will be accomplished. I shared with Mayor Perkins and the department heads that a lot of the things that are involved in the master plan are not directly or solely responsibility of the MPC. Most of the departments within city government and some departments in the parish government have responses to a lot of the recommendations. So we're gonna get all that information together and start presenting that information to this master plan advisory committee, so that they can come up with recommendations on how we move forward in ensuring that we meet the objectives of the master plan when it meets its maturity date in 2030. I didn't expect to have music with my presentation. Are there any questions?
Well, I just like to say, I hear what you're saying, and I certainly agree with you, but you see, when I go up to MLK area, and I've been in Shreveport over 40-something years, but when I go up there and I see the housing, I see the, the grass, I see, I, I'm not talking about going up there and cracking the whip, I'm just saying, we need, I don't see any resources up there. We brought those folk into the city, and we've had other mayors that have hailed from up that area, but I don't see they have invested, well, that's the way I wanna say, they've not reinvested back into that area. And that's what's troubling, is that we don't, we, I just don't see the reinvestment from the government back into MLK area. I do see the concrete roads up there, I saw the David Green's facility they built, but when I drive through the neighborhoods, I, I, my heart just, I just, it's troubling that these folk are asked to live like they live. It's, to me, it's like a war zone. And you say you travel broad border and other, but there's no comparison, what you saw up there, the roof falling in. I, I don't see how they stay out of the, the rain and, and the heat and the cold, but I'm sure there's some other parts of our city that maybe have that, but these folks haven't received anything, any reinvestment in their community, in my opinion. And that's what I'm saying, not going out writing everybody a ticket and, you know, cracking the whip, but I'm just saying the little basic services that government gives, like mowing grass and cleaning out ditches. So that's what I'm referring to. Thank you very much.
And I highly respect what you were saying and, and your sentiments, Councilman Flory. I share those same sentiments. It just, it's just gonna be determined what do we want our city to look like, and when we decide what we want our city to look like and what we want our city to reflect, then we can start taking the appropriate actions to get to those things that we've set as the, the goals of our city is gonna be. And you're absolutely right.
Thank you very much.
It's interesting, interesting that you said that. Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Do you consider yourself?
Do you consider yourself a thermostat or thermometer?
I've been called a lot of names, but, uh, I, I, I guess I would say a thermometer, Mr. Councilman Bradford. Measuring the, the climate and the tip, the current temperature of.
So you don't see, you don't see yourself, your department as being a creator of the climate? Just to measure the climate?
We can create and measure the climate, and we, the wonderful thing about the Metropolitan Planning Commission has two aspects. It has a planning aspect, and it has a zoning enforcement aspect. And that's why I was just using that analogy, that, uh, we sort of measure the, uh, the, the pulse of the city and come up with ways of assisting the city to meet its goals and its objectives and its development over a period of time. And we use enforcement as one of the twos to accomplish those goals.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Did you all, councilmen, did y'all receive the budget, the actual financial report? Everybody got that? No public hearing today? Ms. Jones, will there be any legislation?
There is more. I'm not aware of any.
And now we have the volume to speak. Uh, Chair, Vice Chair will control the time and the speakers.
Chair, get my timer up first. Calling on Mr. Bill Wilson. Please give your name and your address, and you have three minutes to speak.
I don't really talk, but I'm listening to you. My name is Bill Wilson. My address is seventy-seven twenty-seven Millicent Way here in Shreveport. I'm here today to speak on ordinance, no, excuse, not ordinance, Resolution Twenty-Seven, uh, because back on the seventeenth, oh, I'm sorry, I'm a trustee on the Shreveport Policeman's Pension Board for the last thirty years. I saw a legal notice here on the seventeenth of February, whereas the city was trying to, uh, put out and get, retain attorneys, uh, for this board, the police and fire board, uh, and I read it in the legal notice, um, for the policeman and fireman's pension fund. But then it, it, it mentioned something about Fannie Mae, federal home bonds and things. We don't have anything to do with that. I, our request for an attorney for the board has to do with Trans-American Insurance Company, which we have life insurance as policy back since nineteen eighty-nine. So, I mean, I'm for getting the attorneys, but apparently, I don't have anything to do with Fannie Mae bonds.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Did I got y'all confused?
Yeah, thank you, sir. There are two different resolutions for the council for consideration. One has to do with retaining an attorney, uh, for your organization. The other has to do with approving or retaining several law firms to handle a matter on a contingent fee basis that is unrelated to your board. So I, I don't know how the notice was prepared or published, but those two requests are not related.
Okay, well, is, is the resolution for the police and fire?
Twenty-five?
Is twenty-five, yes, yes, sir. And Twenty-Seven is the other.
Well, now, that has, uh, municipal fire and civil service board. I'm retiree, I'm, I'm not active, so that has nothing to do with me. See, the Policeman's Pension Board is different from the Fire and Civil Service Board.
Well, um, I'm, I'm, I think I'm talking to the administration at this point, but I, I.
Do we have an error there?
No, well, I don't know that it is. The, the city is considering engaging lawyers to pursue claims relating to price fixing on bond transactions, and it's possible that your board, your pension board, uh, purchased and sold bonds?
No.
It could, it's, it's possible, um, but I think what Mr. Wilson is talking about is a request that the, the Policeman's Pension Board requested to go out for an RFP, to retain an attorney, and that is not on this agenda. As I mentioned to you, the two matters that are on the agenda are not related to that issue.
It's not only the agenda, but the legal notice that it was, so, okay, so if it was for me, I'm for it, but if it's not, then I'll go home. I appreciate y'all's attention.
Thank you.
I'm paying attention to what you're doing. Thank you.
Have a good day.
You too. Mark Briggs.
Mayor, uh, Chairman, and City Council, thank you for letting us be here today. I want to, first of all, I wasn't prepared.
I'm sorry, go ahead and give your name and address first.
Mark Briggs, thank you. I wasn't prepared to speak today. I am on Sunday, but not today.
Address?
Thirty-two thirty-two East Seventieth, Shreveport. You need any more information?
No.
I can give you the last four of my socials if you need that.
You can make your presentation now.
Thank you. Again, I wasn't prepared to speak. Uh, Joe is our architect, and what we're trying, we're applying for a variance on our property. When we started River Park Church fifteen years ago and bought the old Hemels Park, our intention was to, of course, create a, a community that would appeal to cross-sections of people, blue collar, white collar, no collar, black, white, Hispanic, all kinds, and that is exactly what we're accomplishing. And, uh, when we built our, uh, our property, we had no idea that one day the new, I think what's been inked in is the new, um, ordinance that makes us have to raise the elevation, so to speak, and joke and answer more of those pertinent to the specifics of the elevation. But all we're asking for is that we will relieve the city of any liability there. Uh, it's not like someone lives on the premise. It's used, uh, in fact, we have other groups that come in and use it, but far as anyone residing there permanently, that's not the case. So we would just, we can comply with your, with your new, but I think one of the regulations is like, we would have to go five feet above our current elevation, which would be, first of all, it's an aesthetic nightmare, and then it's just not practical, and we've invested in that property. If you were to look at it from a business standpoint, from a marketing standpoint, if we were a business, we would be wrecked if we had to do that. So any consideration, I, I would appreciate, and thank you so much. Any questions for me?
Since this is my district, I believe you and I talked, and I appreciate you reaching out. I understand that you've had some contact with engineering. We just want to make sure as a city that you understand that there are some theoretical risks to building lower rather than higher. But once you have that understanding, I don't anticipate any opposition from my colleagues to the variance you requested.
Okay, thank you, John. Appreciate it.
Thank you, yes, sir.
Joe Partain?
Joe Partain, twelve oh three Martha Drive, Bossier City, Louisiana. I'm the architect for River Park's new building, and, um, little process, give you a little background. What, what actually went, happened is I submitted for a building permit and, uh, worked with city engineering a lot, Patrick, Furlong, and, uh, Matt Redmond, and Matt called me and said, um, you know, we gotta make sure we're a certain level. And, uh, we actually went, went way along the process until we determined that, uh, from our civil engineer, that we had to go sixty-eight inches higher than our current building. Part of this happened, and I don't want to speak for engineering, but part of this happened because of the floods of twenty fifteen. And, uh, as y'all may know, FEMA is a little bit behind on where their numbers are. And so, uh, we were on the, the riverside of the levee, and typically, you have to build a foot higher than the, the base flood elevation, which we were all prepared to do, which was about thirty inches. When it was found that we had to build five foot eight inches higher, then that was, uh, it was something that basically doubled our cost of construction. And, uh, in filling out the variance, I was the one that kind of did that information, and, um, we are actually, we have portions of our property in the parish and in the city. We haven't required any, uh, any, any water issues from the city, any kind of need of that sort. And, um, we actually provide some documentation to you also, even, um, whole harmless from us, because we, like I said, we don't have, our buildings are, are very park-oriented. Uh, that's where they'll continue to be. And so, um, our, our request is that we be allowed to do, uh, when I talked to Mr. Furlong, he said, you know, we, we do have to follow the federal guidelines, which is FEMA, and the, the twelve inches above the FEMA number is what we request to do, which is still thirty inches higher than we are currently, our ground is out there. But that is something that's reasonable, that we can actually meet, uh, meet the need. We serve, uh, we serve the city in, in Mardi Gras, and we serve the city on the moonbeams, uh, movies, moonbeam things. We do a lot of things that a lot of churches don't do. So we like to feel like we're not just a, a church on Sunday, but throughout the week. So our request is that we be allowed to, um, meet the FEMA requirement and, uh, not this, not this new requirement that's, um, a special requirement that engineering has, so. Is there any questions y'all might have of me? Thank you, sir. Okay, thanks.
Kenneth Kraft.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Kenneth Kraft, one thirty-seven Archer, Shreveport, seven one one zero five. Members of the council, Mr. Mayor, another reminder, the big hiring for the census starts in early March for the field enumerators, the census takers, twentytwentycensus.gov/jobs. It's a good, uh, temporary opportunity for folks to make a little money. I want to remind the council, what Mr. Flurry, Mr. Bradford said is true. We came so darn close on November sixteenth on Prop Three, having failed by sixty-six votes. Thirty-four votes would have flipped it, a fraction of a vote per precinct. Sorry I couldn't make infrastructure, but I don't get that much of a lunch hour. But infrastructure had it passed. Number three included several million for the Cooper Road Ditch and several million for street improvements in Mr. Bradford's district. We didn't quite get there. Hope we can revisit in twenty twenty-one. We had a successful double oh one bond issue under Keith Hightower as mayor. Ten years later, we had a successful hundred seventy-five million dollar bond issue under Mayor Cedric Glover from District Eight, former councilman from District Eight.
Who was that? Who, who was that?
Heavy G is the DJ name. Okay, so, we really are, are close, and, and whenever we revisit a bond issue. And the other thing I want to say is, I want to recommend you guys approve Colonel Whitehorn as CO, Shurka Fields as CFO. CFO is something I recommended April eighteenth of nineteen eighty. Among my five recommendations to get hired, the other four have been implemented. New city jail, get rid of older streets, put AMBOs and medics in the fire department, not private, and do a budget reserve, although we backslid, but we did. And let's get a chief financial officer. We might have not had purchase orders outstanding on projects. When Barbara's assistant, Don Hobd, and I did projects in the early to mid-eighties, I did general obligation bonds from the eighty and then the eighty-three bond, and Don did CDBG, Community Development Block Grant. We always check, we never left money on the table when we closed out a project. We returned it to the general fund or the Community Development Block Grant Fund. I'm thinking we were let down probably by our prior controller. Uh, I, I see that as part of his job description. But Mr. Whitehorn is administrator, the word is chief administrative officer, not chief budget officer Casey, chief financial officer, hopefully Shurika, chief technology officer, who did a great job Thursday night. I mean, we had a food service company there. We had Ben Riggs and Keith Hanson, you know, Benny Keith. And they did a real good job, and we want to thank them for showing up. But let's, let's let the CEO become the coordinator among operators. That's what the, I want the mayor going around the city helping us get jobs, I mean, going around the country and letting the CEO run the city. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes, sir?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
On address, Mr. Kraft. I respect, I respect you in a lot of ways, you know that. We met when I first came on the council, I don't think I knew before then. I remember having some issues in my district, and, and I had a press, a press vigil after the meeting, and you joined me, you remember, and you actually prayed for my district. How do you view Shreveport? And, and you have a, you have a keen understanding of how Shreveport has evolved.
I view it as a city on the cusp of what Mayor Glover called the next great city of the South. I hate to see that the federal census estimate, the estimate for twenty twenty is one hundred eighty-eight thousand eight hundred. I hope they're wrong, I hope it's much more. But what you said a few weeks ago in January, you wish you didn't have to say this, but you thought in some ways racially, we were not as far as we should have been thirty years ago. I think that, that the city has to come closer together, like Mr. Flurry said. And, and darn, we came close in November, we didn't quite get enough votes. But even had that passed, and we had that Cooper Road Ditch and those projects, that would solve a little piece of the problem. But I see us as having a leader with vision, whose youth and relative inexperience is crying out for senior leadership like Colonel Whitehorn and older folks who've been around the block many times. This, this young man said at Southwood in August of eighteen, he's not an expert municipal finance. Truth is, nobody on that, that dais was. Mayor Tyler had some experience in it. But when he first ran at fourteen, nobody has experience in municipal finance unless he or she has worked in it. And so I would like to answer your question succinctly by, by summing it up. We've, we've got a long, long way to go. I'm optimistic, but that's predicated upon the, the eight of you, the seven council members and the mayor, with all the department heads, getting really serious about coming together and not just, not just pillow talk. You know, Doris Day had a cute movie, Pillow Talk, but I've seen in my forty-two years there are a lot of pillow talk from, from politicians at this podium. Why didn't a former mayor from your neighborhood, he, he did quite a bit. We had, we had a few things for your district in the twenty-eleven bond issue. Not as much as, uh, your predecessor would have wanted, but I don't think any council member ever gets as much in a bond. You know, remember, remember when Jackie's husband Jerry started out, they were two hundred forty-seven million. The one eighty-six is, it was whittled down many millions of dollars. So when we revisit, maybe in twenty twenty-one, and do more infrastructure, I, I think, I think we can keep chipping away at it, but.
No, I'm gonna hope that we can, but let me ask you one other question specifically. Do you know the, do you know the makeup of the city racially at this point?
Yeah, I know the, the actual makeup and the voter registration.
I'm talking about the makeup. I'm not talking about voter registration. What, what do you consider the makeup of the city right now? Ratio of black and white and other?
It's pushing fifty-eight point four among the African-American community. The, the white makeup is probably in the high thirties. Census will bear it all out.
Well, I mean.
And then other races.
I'm, I'm trying to establish a reference, cause I, cause you, you, you are already anticipating what the twenty twenty census is gonna report. I mean, we, we know it's gonna be more than fifty-eight percent, don't we, African-American?
I think it'll be close to sixty and a half to sixty-one.
Okay.
That's a guess, but we, we won't know until we count.
So, 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 Mr. Kraft, what I'm, what I'm, what I'm wanting to, uh, pretty much articulate is that this Shreveport of the seventies and eighties and nineties is gone.
Who?
And that if we're going to be a city, a, a progressive city, we're gonna have to refashion and rethink Shreveport. We cannot have sixty percent of our citizens black and poor. We're gonna have to refashion a city where everybody can prosper. Don't you agree?
I share that. You know, it was, it was fifty-two years ago, I wanted to get engaged to a young black girl. So nineteen sixty-eight, I was twenty, and I went to pick her up for a date one Saturday night, and her mom said, "My husband just doesn't want a white son-in-law." Broke my heart. But I have, I have African-American in-laws. I recite, I have a dream. Anytime I'm invited, we have to listen to what Dr. King said August twenty-eighth of sixty-three. We, we, we should teach that. That's education. I'm, I'm sad that it's not taught in the high schools and the middle schools, that fabulous speech some fifty-seven years ago. And, and you're right, Councilman Bradford, and, and the best way is to get serious and stop the pillow talk. And I'm gonna get back to work at the Census Bureau, and I'll keep working with you guys any way I can. But really, you need to run around the country and talk to the two senators and Mike Johnson and see if we can make Humvees at GM. I've mentioned this before. We made Hummers there. It may, it may be impossible, but what does it say in the good book? Three things. Ask and you shall receive, seek and you shall find, knock and it shall be opened. We've got to ask and seek and knock.
All right. Marvin Mohammed.
Marvin Mohammed.
Marvin Mohammed, 2808, Hersy D. Wilson. First of all, I want to commend the city council chair. About a month ago, we asked him and we urged him to withdraw or pull his resolution to create a city charter, charter review, and he did so. Councilman Bradford, you asked me two weeks ago, you know, what is it about this city that needs to change so that we can, so that the citizens can again believe in government? This body and the administration must begin to act with one purpose. When I see on the agenda introduction to, again, to create a city charter review committee by not only, by Councilman Nixon, but by Councilman Butcher, I'm appalled, because despite what Councilman Nixon suggested, that it's only for to look at the ability to add a legal person to represent the council. That's at best a half-truth. Until there's a home which you need to your purpose with this city, with this council, this city, Councilman Bradford, as you just got through speaking to Mr. Kraft, will always be in trouble, and the status quo do, don't really care. I also see a resolution by three councilmen that deals with upholding the United States Constitution Amendment Number Two and the State of Louisiana, what, Section One, Article Two, but gun rights. Let me remind you, you know, I find men and women of the Shreveport Police Department just went to serve warrants in the Greensboro neighborhood. I don't know those weapons that those officers has to face, but there does need to be some restrictions. Isn't about taking legal rights away, but we have guns that are going into these neighborhoods that men and women that want to go home at night don't want to face. So, think about what you are proposing. Also, and I'd be remiss to not to speak about the $22 million development that is being introduced to the Cooper Road community. It's a neighborhood that I grew up in, I went to Northside Elementary, near Green Oaks, performed North Academy, and am also a graduate of...
Mr. Mohammed, your time is up, so I'm going to ask you, what is it that you'd like to let us know about that particular development?
Well, I had some concerns. I had some concerns because it was moving from R1 to R2. I also had some concerns because it wasn't what I consider would be the best approach in field development or senior structure homes.
Mr. Mohammed, will you hear one second? There's a meeting at 6 o'clock.
I'm aware, I'm aware.
And I think all your concerns would be addressed.
No, I haven't...
Okay, go ahead.
I'll yield the floor back to you.
But, what I did was, I reached out to one of the major partners in it, Anthony Williams, who recently just served a year as Sussler's alumni president. I reached out to him, and he called me, and we talked a pretty good while. And, I'm of the opinion, right now, that the MLK community would be better fit for that proposal.
Would benefit?
I'm sorry?
Would benefit?
Absolutely. He, after speaking with him, after speaking with him, he informed me there's going to be, and the city might be able to speak on to this, there's going to be $2 million allocated for a substation in the MLK community that goes along with that project. He informed me that it's going to be a gated community, clubhouse, walking trail, swimming pool. He, I asked him very specifically about the notion that it would be a modern-day Cooper Road Plaza or P Street, if you will. He informed me that it wouldn't be Section 8 housing or low-income housing, but rather affordable housing, meaning that it would give those individuals that were just moving into the job market, an opportunity to have decent living. I believe Councilman Bradford asked me the question, I believe, two weeks ago as well. He mentioned ALIS, Asset Limited Income Constrained Employed. And we, and I mentioned that 60% of the residents of the city of Shreveport cannot even afford rent. Well, that 166 apartment building, which I still have some questions, will in fact address some of that need. There isn't any development in the MLK community. So, and so why, that wouldn't be my first choice. I would be hard-pressed not to accept $22 million worth of investments, especially when I don't see them asking the city of Shreveport to do anything. In fact, they're giving the city of Shreveport something that they, so, that they mentioned that they desire.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mohammed.
Councilman Bradford.
I apologize for interrupting you, keep talking.
Okay, well, thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I want to...
Yes.
Thank you.
Councilman Green.
Thank you for coming. I'm from Belcher. I was raised in Belcher, and on what you were talking about, the gun right. My granddaddy could not carry his rifle in his truck, but other folk could. On Resolution Number 32, it's been dressed up by some stuff. Why do you figure that?
Well, I do know Cato Parish Commissioner, Lyndon Ben Johnson, that he advocated for a resolution on the parish side that was voted down, well, it was voted down because of the 6-6 vote. And the Parish Commission, just last Thursday, was filled, it was standing room only. Gun rights advocates, which I have no problem with those who wants to protect their family, who wants to protect their home. But, the truth of the matter is that we have AK-47s, AR-15s, M4s, other automatic and semi-automatic and automatic weapons that are suffocating in the inner cities. And we need to seriously look at, how can we get those weapons out of our neighborhood? As I mentioned, the five men and women of the Shreveport Police Department went to just serve a warrant for drugs, probably. Well, usually if there's drugs, there's going to be guns. And where there's guns, usually, there's going to be the opposite. And we have to stop making everything political in the city. We really need to stop that, because what happens is, the people begin, the trust of the people with government begins to erode more and more and more. So, there won't be a bond issue that'll be able to pass. There won't be a TIF that would be able to, that the general public will begin to, without that trust. I want to commend the administration for bringing in a great appointee for the position of CAO. His administration, in fact, I was one of the ones that criticized him for having administration of a lot of young people, a lot of young people wet behind the ears, if you will. And although I believe in giving young people an opportunity, you need some people that's been there before. I think that appointment, the appointment of our risk manager, and I believe the city attorney just recently brought forth an advocate, I believe they actually got approved, that had over 30 years of experience. And when you start having these, pardon the language, the gray whiskers, in the many years now, now you get an administration that can move forward. And so, when you start seeing these type of strides, you know, that says you have administration that's listening. I think that's what that says. So, I do want to encourage the appointment of that, and I also want to encourage the appointment of our current CEO to the position of...
Mr. Mohammed?
Yes.
My question was...
I apologize, Councilman Green. Sometimes, I've been accused of being a frustrated Baptist minister. I'm sure you understand.
Yeah, but my question about one, what my point was, my granddaddy could not put a rifle in his truck and ride around in Belcher, but other folk could. And then my next statement was that people that are not affected by guns in their community don't understand.
Right.
Last week, that was an 85-year-old man.
Right.
Killed in my district.
Right. I believe, I believe very...
Not with that.
I believe very near your home.
Two feet from my house.
The report that I received.
And, it was not with a 22 pistol like we used to carry.
Right.
It was with a gun that shoots fast and a lot.
Right.
And so, I wanted to make that statement. But, what I was referring to as Resolution Number 32 about the charter, the resolution now has been dressed up, and my question to you was, I don't know if you looked at the whole resolution as to how it's been dressed up now that...
The PDF file?
Yeah, that it wanted a whole lot of different people to make it, I guess, to make it look nice or whatever, but it still carries the same, it carries the same idea.
Right.
And that's what I was asking you, why do you think that it was dressed up?
Well, you know, evil always has to come in the name of good. That's how the con is carried out. The con man always comes in the name of good. I'm not saying someone, I don't want to suggest that someone is trying to con, but it's an undercurrent to rip the mayor of all powers. Some people might say, "Well, he needs to be ripped of his power." I mean, he purchased land for 466,000 just last fall, and they put that out there. But, what they don't say, that it's literally impossible for the mayor to purchase property without a work order or a project being open. And maybe this council didn't do it, but the previous council did under the title administration or even the Glover administration, which happened because that property had been trying to be bought for years. But, because the asking price was just greatly over the appraised value, the other administrations said no. But, finally, maybe someone passed, maybe the financial situation changed within that family, or maybe this administration got a secret weapon negotiated that we don't know about. But, they was able to close the deal. But, they use that to create mistrust in government, and that's bad. We need to stop that. The city, we suffer because of that. Nothing will happen.
Thank you, Pastor.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. John Glover. That was your birthday present there, Mr. Mohammed.
Thank you, thank you. Ms. John Glover, 93, 25, Normandy Drive, 71118. I'm always looking over the agendas, and I'm always watching the effects and effects of what comes about with some of these things. Recently, I have come to question processes, processes particularly that says the mayor has the right to do this, that, or the other, the processes that says the council should do this, that, or the other, particularly when the position of Chief of Staff was created. Now, the charter says such cannot be done without the council's permission or even oversight, and yet it was done. Also, there was an impact to the budget. That $160,000 that is being paid or has been attached to that particular position, that will impact the budget, particularly when the position CAO still exists. And, I don't know exactly how much is, well, if the approval of the appointment is done tomorrow, it will have that same dollar value that currently the Chief of Staff has. Now, I believe, and I am prefacing this, that I believe that the mayor circumvented you all and your authority, but I also say you all did not do your due diligence when you allowed such to take place. Now, again, I do pay attention. Even when I was gone almost six months, I was still paying attention. And we talk about trying to make everything transparent, where we can gain a reliance on our city government and those that we entrust to steward this government. Well, when practices are not adhered to and that charter dictates such, what do you say then? See, I'm not one who wants the division, and I definitely don't want the divisiveness. But, that's all I have been seeing here as of late. We are coming out of the woodworks with positions, positions that impact our budget, and if we are indeed in dire straits financially here in our city, how can we afford it? But, again, every one of you all elected officials have a stake in this situation, and I implore you all to be about what we, the citizens, elected you to do. Now, we didn't give you carte blanche, because that's why I stand here, but I expect you to be, as you mentioned in your prayer, to do the right thing. Thank you.
Cody Dews. That concludes all requests to speak.
Okay, thank you, Madam. Moving along, we have the following executive appointments considered tomorrow. Mr. Tom Kilroy.
Chief Administrative Officer Henry Whitehorn, Senior. Chief Financial Officer Sherika Fields-Jones. Deputy Director of IT Erin Allen. Assistant City Attorney Cheyenne Y. Wilson. And German M. Melles.
Okay, any questions, although?
Mr. Chairman.
All right, Councilman Bradford, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mayor, I don't want to put you on the spot, but if you are comfortable responding to something the young lady said regarding establishing, in the interim of the confirmation, a new title, can you speak on that?
Yeah, Councilman, in the press release, well, number one, I always consult our city attorney, so, to make sure that we're consistent with the city charter, and anybody can look into the city charter, rather than, oftentimes, we hear these talking points that actually aren't grounded in law at all. But, anyway, I consulted with the city attorney first and foremost, and then we went to, we looked at whether or not my office was permitted to do such. But, in our press release, we said that we would bring in Mr. Whitehorn to help us through the transition as Sherika is pulling double duty right now as CAO/CFO.
Yes.
So, he's been here to help us out in that position. So, it wasn't circumventing anything, we adhered to the rules and regulations that we had to do, had to.
I mean, I think that's reasonable, that if she's doing double duty, he has somebody to... somebody to prepare to help out. I guess, I guess the question that I have, and you made us aware that, that was going to happen at the last meeting.
Yeah, and I made the city aware of it. Like I said, we released a press release to every news station in the city that said he would be helping out our office during the transition.
But I guess I wasn't aware of, of, of the compensation that was, that was going to be afforded at that time. Was that, was that consistent with what you felt was necessary at the time as well?
Yeah, it was, Councilman. And I mean, if somebody comes on, then we have to give them consideration. We have to compensate them for something. And if, if that was an issue, like I hope that it would have been brought up, you know, weeks ago when we put it out, and we would have, as a matter of fact, Chief Whitehorn is such a public servant, he even volunteered to say, hey, I can waive, you know, I can waive compensation until I'm confirmed, if that makes people more comfortable. But that's not how we've done it traditionally. If we brought in people to do, to provide a service to the city of Shreveport, we compensate them. I have full intentions of, and I did put him up to be confirmed as the C A O, so I thought we'd keep his compensation consistent with that.
And there's no real inflation of, of the budget, because you said there's a open-
There is no conflation of the budget. Again, another talking point, it's the same that Sharika was being, our, our C A O was being paid before, but rather than the benefits going towards healthcare and the other benefits, it's going towards his salary only, because he's veteran, retired from the federal government, and it's going into his salary, and he's waived those other benefits.
Let me say this, and I'm just going to say what I'm going to say. Everybody's not comfortable with this appointment. I know, you know that. I told you at the last meeting that after speaking with Mr. Whitehorn and you convincing me that we ought to give him a chance, he thought he was, even if he did a national search, that he would still be more familiar with the city of Shreveport and its operations than somebody coming in, learning for six or eight months to, to get up to speed on that. And I told you, and committed that I would, I would, I would support his confirmation. But the problem we have, Mayor, is that the city at this point, I, I can't, I never saw it, I never saw it like this. One sector of the city is suspicious of everything you do, everything. I mean, you, you know, I mean, you get up, the windows, and the rumor starts. The mayor's doing this for a reason, the mayor's doing that for a reason. On the other side, I think it's to the other extreme. You can't do no wrong to some of these millennials. I mean, you, you their hero. And, and, and both, both extremes is, is bad, because you're not doing as bad as, as some people think, and you're not a hero as some people believe. And I, I hope we can reach a medium here, because I mean, I'm, I mean, you know, we just, we just at a, at a, at a, at a quagmire to where I don't know how we're going to make this work.
Yeah, Councilman, I agree, I, I agree with you completely. You're talking about polarization that's in our, our committee, if I can sum it up in one, in our community, if I can sum it up in one word. And you asked me what I think about people that are in opposition to, to Mr. Whitehorn. I would say, I think it would be a shame for us to take whatever reasons there are to go against Mr. Whitehorn tomorrow. And I say that because, I mean, you can look back in the history of C A Os for the city of Shreveport, and actually, I would put him up against C A Os from the city of Dallas and the city of Little Rock and a bunch of other of our peer cities around the country, which I'm great, you know, friends with a lot of these mayors. And his resume stands above all of them. This is a man that's been confirmed unanimously by the United States Senate, so I hear a lot of arguments about partisanship. Well, forty-one senators confirmed Mr. Whitehorn as a U.S. Marshal. So I think it would be shameful for our national government to see fit that this is the right candidate, and that our state government saw fit that he was the right candidate when he was the superintendent of state police and, and, and his other gubernatorial position by Governor Blanco. But for the city to say, you're not good enough for us, I think we, we should take a very long look at ourselves on whatever's driving this opposition and say, do we really want the city to progress if that's our attitude?
Well, you know, my, 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 I couldn't leave the office today, and, and the chairman was so kind, he bought me, he bought me a pizza for lunch, a personal pan supreme. I was, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Because I had to do my job, all I require. What'd you say? You gonna bring me a pizza tomorrow? I, I insist, good, bad, indifference, that people do their job. If there's, if there's fallout, and you did your job, I could defend you. I'll change the policy, I'll, I'll re, 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 rethink or reevaluate your job description. My subordinates only get in trouble when they don't do their job, okay? Now, I said that to say that you feel comfortable that you've done, you've done your job. But at the same time, we, we have to also be responsible. And I told my colleagues who I expressed my support of, Mr. Whitehorn, is that the premise is not on Mr. Whitehorn. You will be held accountable for Mr. Whitehorn's and your decision to recommend him for this position. If Mr. Whitehorn does not pan out, evaluation time come in two and a half years. And if this administration does not live up to the expectations of the voters, then the voters will hold you accountable. You understand?
One hundred percent, Councilman.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's all.
Mr. Nicholson. Mr. Chairman, as we all know, Mr. Whitehorn has an exceptional record of public service, and I would say nothing to disparage that record. He has done great service to our country as United States Marshal, to our state as Superintendent of Police, and he served the city as Police Chief. But I will say this, process is important. And one of our most important responsibilities as the legislative branch of the city government, as members of this council, is to ensure that we follow, that the city follows the best possible process for selecting the city's leaders. I have requested, and other members of the council have requested, that the mayor conduct a national search for the best available chief administrative officer. That didn't happen, and I recognize that that has not happened in the past. Many mayors preceding Mayor Perkins have selected chief administrative officers in precisely the manner he has selected Mr. Whitehorn. But I hope that over the next two and a half years, and in the future, we can continue to move toward better processes and doing things in a way that will ensure that we're always getting the best possible result for the citizens. I don't, perhaps the result of a national search would be that Mr. Whitehorn was the best candidate. That's entirely possible. But I am concerned about the lack of that process, and it is a factor in, in my vote on this nomination. Thank you.
Mayor Perkins?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Councilman Nicholson, you, I, I respect you requesting this, completely within your authority to do it, but as you said, like, no mayor in the history has ever had to do a national search for their C A O. And we just talked about it earlier, changing the rules in the middle of the game. This is just another example of changing the rules, because now that I'm sitting in the mayor's seat, and you can say it's not about you, it's about us improving processes. Well, we should make an amendment or try to pass an ordinance where that is the rule. But right now, I am operating under the same rules of those mayors that you just pointed out, exercise it in that manner. So if that is your vendetta over a process that you subjectively think should be in place, and that the process is not actually on the book, then that, you can carry that water. But again, that is going to send a very clear message to a lot of citizens in Shreveport and to a lot of people paying attention to Shreveport, that we do things backward. This is a qualified candidate, and to take that out on that candidate, I think is wrong. But I respect the council as always, and we'll, I will respect whatever the council decides tomorrow.
I yield to Councilman Butcher, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Thank, thank you, Councilman. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess that, that I have to start out like Councilman Nicholson did and, and say that I respect Chief Whitehorn a lot, always have. I've known several state troopers that said he was one of the best commanders that they ever had. I think that what maybe, I think Councilman Bradford kind of alluded to this a little bit, but we are polarized. There's no doubt, the city's polarized. And I don't know, I don't know how we get around that. I, I get several calls and several emails from my constituents, and I ran on the premise that I would bring your voice back to Government Plaza. And that's what I've tried to do, is listen to everybody, and not just my constituents, but, but, but I'll be honest, the majority of the emails I get are from my constituents. And I try my best to listen to what those constituents say. I think that, going back to what Ms. Glover said, and I think you said it very well, I, I wish we had, had known, and, and I would only expect, Mayor, for Chief Whitehorn to have said that to you, that he didn't need any pay in this week. I mean, I would expect that he's that type man that would do that. So that was not a surprise to me. I am a little concerned that, that this was done. I know you said that you were going to bring him on in an interim-type basis, and I expected that. But I think that what most of my constituents and their voices were saying to me is the pay was excessive. What are you going to do about Ms. Jones answering directly to the mayor? I mean, there was a lot of unanswered questions that my people have, as far as my constituents in my district. And that goes from, you know, everybody from all walks of life. They want, they want to know what's going on. You know, I, I know that we've had interims that, that weren't making full pay that the, that the department heads were supposed to make. If we're talking about level playing ground, then we need, we need to be level. But, but I just want to say that it is up to you. You're right, and, but I will say this, and I, and I have to say this, that in an environment that we're in in Shreveport right now, the other thirty-five, forty percent, however you want to see it, I think you and I had a conversation, I was just reminding Council Bowman of this, something I said in your office about, there are several people that think that you do no wrong, and there are several people that think that you do all wrong. And there's, in the middle, we all. But what I'm trying to say is, I, I just think that those that, that don't think that you're doing the right thing, a lot of that is because they just, it's not anything that you've necessarily done, it's because of what's happened in the past. People don't have, don't trust city government, and I think that's a lot of the reason you got elected, is because you're an honorable man. I mean, you're, you're honorable, you were, you were a combat veteran, you went to, you went to Harvard Law School, you graduated from the best military academy that there is, in my opinion. People expected that. So I guess what I'm saying is, just, just don't forget those, I'll say fifty percent, but maybe more like thirty-nine percent, that may not agree with you. Let's, let's remember everybody. I try to, I really do. Remember those people whenever you make a decision, that they may not agree with you, and it's, it's nothing against you, it's just what's happened in the past. And that's something we all have to overcome. So, thank you.
Yeah, just, can I respond?
May I, will you?
Oh, yeah, go ahead. I'm sorry, I just-
I want to just say that while you were gone, Councilman Bradford, that Grayson initiated and then completed a proper compliment sandwich. But remember from last year, the compliment sandwich? You know, well, you look pretty today, you're shopping too much. Have one nice day.
Oh, they-
Yeah, he got it, he got it all in there. But Mayor, I would hope that you would, this is probably the best time to address any issues about the charter and direct reports and all that.
Yeah, and I can do that. But so Grayson, I'm sorry, Councilman Butcher, I apologize. Yeah, I apologize. I'll say this, when, when people are looking for answers or looking to see whether or not I did the right thing or the wrong thing, it can become extremely subjective. But we are blessed with a city charter that makes things objective. You can just read it along. If they're looking for answers on what I'm doing and whether or not it's legally permissible or whether it's not as ethically permissible, they can look at the state ethics laws. So with this one, it's a legal matter, looking at the charter and what powers it grants to the executive branch. So it's not a, hey, let, let the Perkins administration read the, the charter to you or, you know, let me interpret it for you. The charter clearly states that the mayor has the power to appoint a C A O. It says that I have the authority to hire people within my office. And, and I'm going to let the city attorney expound on this. And it also says that me, in conjunction with you all, I can allocate duties and responsibilities throughout the staff in the manner in which I hope to get with your approval. So there is no infractions against the city charter in the manner in which we're going about this. So, city attorney, can you, can you address the first question on whether or not the mayor has the power to create a position within the exec, within the executive office? And the second question on whether or not I have the authority to allocate duties and responsibilities throughout my staff? Can you, can you expound on that?
Yes. To the first question, I go to Section eight-point-zero-one of the city charter that outlines that the mayor can construct his, essentially his executive staff to include the mayor's personal staff, chief administrative officer, city attorney, city physician, the planning and zoning director, the personnel director, and such other activities and personnel as the council may assign to it by ordinance. One question that I had was how should that be constructed? The charter doesn't necessarily speak to how the people are allocated within the executive office, just that those positions must exist. So I guess, Mayor, to answer your first question, whether or not you can bring on staff, that would be answered under Section eight-point-zero-point-one. To your second question with regard to the actual, and I don't want to misquote it, your second question with regard to the actual appointment of a C A O, was that your question?
Yeah, the, the second question, the appointment of the C A O, but the duties and responsibilities as well of the C A O, and who's doing, who's reporting to who?
Yes. Again, I would refer back to Section eight-point-zero-one and also to eight-point-zero-two, where it discussed the operations. And it discussed that the C A O must be subject to confirmation by the council as, as well as the city attorney and any assistant city attorneys, et cetera. And that the mayor shall make rules and regulations consistent with the charter and ordinances as it prescribes the duties and responsibilities of the non-elected officers and employees of the city. I believe that sufficiently answers your question.
Does it speak to the duties and responsibilities, that particular, that ordinance?
Which one? For the C A O?
Yes.
No, that is addressed under Section five-point-zero-seven of the charter.
Yep.
And it details, I don't want to insult the council by reading all of this, but it details the various department heads that must report to the C A O pursuant to the charter.
Yes, and, and there is a, there is a section in it that says, that talks about the authority of the mayor being able to change duties and responsibilities and who is reporting to the C A O, correct?
Yes, that would be, I think that would fall under Section four-point-two-zero, powers of council respecting organization of city government.
Yeah, and for the council members that don't read this at night before you go to sleep, we can also email it to you. We can also email you every single clause that was referenced today. Thank you.
I yield, Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Butcher, have you finished?
I'm, I'm good for right now. We can discuss tomorrow if we need to.
Okay. All right, let's, there are no items under consent agenda for introduction or to be adopted. Misery Jones, the C A O, please proceed.
Under Section nine A, Resolutions on Second Reading and Final Passage, Resolution seven, Establishing Guidelines for the Approval or Disapproval by the Shreveport City Council for Industrial Tax Exemption, Applications Submitted to L E D for Projects Located in the City of Shreveport. the City of Shreveport, Resolution 10, Encouraging the MPC to Pass a Resolution to Halt the Acceptance of New Annexations, Applications for a Period of 12 Months, Resolution 11, Authorizing the Mayor to Execute a Contract for Water Supply and Sewerage Disposal Between the City of Shreveport, Louisiana Pratt Paper LLC, Pratt Recycling LLC, and BFI Waste LLC, Resolution 16, Authorizing the Mayor to Execute an Agreement Between the City of Shreveport and Downtown Shreveport Unlimited, Inc., Resolution 17, Authorizing the Mayor to Execute an Agreement Between the City of Shreveport and Penpoint Events LLC, Resolution 18, Authorizing the Mayor to Execute an Agreement Between the City of Shreveport and People Acting for Change and Equality, Inc., Resolution 19, Authorizing the Mayor to Execute an Agreement Between Shreveport and Red River Revel, Resolution 20, Authorizing the Mayor to Execute an Agreement Between Shreveport and Ro Omega Friends, Inc., Resolution 21, Authorizing the Mayor to Execute an Agreement Between Shreveport and Get Up, Inc., Resolution 22, Authorizing the Mayor to Execute an Agreement with Red River Road Runners, Inc., Resolution 23, Authorizing the Mayor to Execute an Acceptance of Active Donation Between Shreveport and Best Yet Yuri LLC, Here and After Called Owner for Water and Sewer Main Extensions and Related Facilities to Serve Best Yet Storage, Yuri Drive, Resolution 24, Authorizing the Mayor to Accept a Monetary Donation of $48,237.03 from Willis Knight and Health System to Shreveport to be utilized by the Shreveport Police Department, Resolution 25, Authorizing the Employment of Legal Counsel to Represent the Municipal Fire and Police Civil Service Board of the City of Shreveport, Resolution 26, Authorizing the Mayor to Execute Grant Documents with the U.S. Department of Justice, Resolution 27, Authorizing the Execution of a Retainer Agreement with the Connor Group LLC, Hammond, Sills, Atkins, and Geese LLP, Johnson &amp; Johnson, PC, Wells, and Washington, and Wells Law Firm, Resolution 28, Authorizing the Mayor's Signature on a Consent to Assignment, Resolution 29, Stating the City of Shreveport's Endorsement of Brown Taylor Development LLC to Participate in the Benefits of the Louisiana Restoration Tax Abatement Program, Resolution 31, A Resolution of the City of Shreveport to Support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Louisiana and Urging the Louisiana State Legislature and the Governor of Louisiana to Take No Action, Which Would Violate the Freedoms Guaranteed by Either the Second Amendment of the Constitution of the United States or Article 1, Section 11 of the Constitution, Resolution 32, Establishing a Charter Review Committee.
Any discussion on those?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Hi. Councilman Green?
Thank you. On item number 32, I'd like for the authors of this, Councilman Nicholson and Councilman Butcher, all this deal started in 1839. And of course, I think it was back in 1978, I believe, when we got this new mayor form of government, strong mayor form of government. And so I've looked through the charter, and I've checked everything out, asked to, where are the flaws, and what's the real deal for this charter change? So since you all are the authors of it, if you could just explain to me, what is it in the charter that you don't like, and what is the ultimate goal? Once this committee, it's like, for an instance, on the last meeting when it was defeated, Councilman Nicholson, you said that you would put it back on here every week, every council meeting.
I don't think I said that.
And it wasn't defeated, it was withdrawn, wasn't it?
I mean, it was withdrawn, but you said you will put it back on. Was back on.
I didn't say I'd put it on every two weeks. I may have been, I didn't intend to reintroduce it.
Right. Well, that's what, you would reintroduce. So tell, would you just be fair and honest and tell what flaw in this charter that these folk put together to get our city that up to this point, that it's just something in there that's really eating you, or eating whoever? I just really want to know. And if you could just explain that to me. And Mr. Chair, if you will allow us to just have a little conversation, I'd really just like to know, what's the thinking of putting this on, before I brand it?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman?
Could he?
Yeah, yeah.
Reverend Green, first off, the charter, the last time the charter was reviewed or amended was in October of 2006.
Okay.
So we have looked at it. It's been, what, 14 years now, since we've looked at the charter?
Okay.
I think that the Caddo Parish Commission reviews their charter every three years. Four years? Four years.
Okay.
I think that it's a good idea for us to look at our charter, see if there's things, I mean, there's several positions in there. You know, we're talking about positions today. There's several positions that aren't even existing anymore. A city physician is one of them. Let's look through the charter, and the way that, and I will concede this to you, the way that it was set up last time is not anything like it's proposed to be set up this time. The way that, on the proposition that was, or the resolution that was presented a few weeks ago, it was going to be council members making that decision. I understand how that looks. This is a, this is a committee of 15 people. You'll have an appointee, I'll have an appointee.
Oh, I won't have an appointee. I mean, it's, no. What I'm saying is that, I know it looks good as to saying, well, we're going to give you this, but we already got this, so I don't need, but go ahead.
No, what I'm saying is, let me finish, because a lot of people may not have read it like you have and understand. The premise behind it is, for the mayor's office, the city attorney's office, the council members, the citizens, for everybody involved, and then some other community organizations to have involvement on, what do we think we need? 1978, you're not going to still drive a car with the same tires on it from 1978. I mean, I'm not. It's time for us just to look at the charter. There, you know, I think that this misconception, that there's some kind of undertone of, I think Mr. Muhammad said evil, I don't think that this is evil. This is, this is good housekeeping. It's been, it's been since 2006, since we've even reviewed it. And like the mayor said, yes, sir, I have read the charter. I read, before I was elected, I studied the council's roles very deeply, and I read the charter about once every two or three months, just to keep myself up. But a lot of citizens have it.
My question, Councilman, is this. Are we going to do the Constitution of the United States of America, because there's a lot of stuff in there wrong?
I, I'm not...
So my question is...
Reverend, I'm not, I'm not elected to do that.
I understand. So my question is this. You've read it over, and you've read it over, and you've read it over. Can you tell me one bad thing in there, one bad thing, that we can't live with?
I think that, that one thing that Mr. Muhammad mentioned, I think that the council should probably have its own representation. We can't do that at this point.
To represent us for what?
To represent us as elected officials.
An attorney.
Yeah, an attorney.
Okay.
Have our own representation.
Okay.
Okay? We've got all these job titles, like I discussed just a minute ago, that need to be taken out. We don't have those anymore, unless we're going to hire our city physician. Now, there is some, you know, what Ms. Krill said earlier, that the mayor can appoint and do away with. Well, let's do it. There are a lot of questions about the charter, and I think maybe even more so, and I told Councilman Flurry this, or Chairman Flurry this, whenever this legislation was put on, I said, even if it does just one thing, even if we don't, if we come out of this charter review committee with absolutely nothing, the one thing we'll come out with, if we have five or six meetings and discuss the charter, is people may understand the charter a little bit better, and maybe not think everything we're trying to do is behind, like the mayor just said, you know, if you want to read it at night, I'll send you a copy of it. Well, maybe if we have, let's say we have 10 charter review meetings, and we get media coverage, they're there to watch this, and we discuss, we discuss major issues of the city and the charter, maybe people would understand.
Okay.
So that's my reason.
That's your reason. So since, since you've picked out those three, why do we need a committee to go back and read it and find those reasons?
Why do we need a committee to pick, we're putting on a bond issue? I mean...
The bond issue?
Yeah, I mean, we had a bond committee.
Oh, you, you didn't vote for that.
Well, no, I didn't. But why do we need a committee?
So, since Councilman Nicholson is the author of it, and you're tagging along, I'd just like to hear his...
I'd be, to be perfectly honest with you, Reverend, I'm the one that authored this one.
This one?
Yes, I did.
I do not, I do not want to take credit from Councilman Butcher.
Okay. But I see your name on it.
This is his work.
No.
He came up with a 15-member committee, and he kindly allowed me to co-sponsor with it.
Okay.
Just to tag along with what Councilman Butcher has said, like him, I think periodic review of the city's charter is good practice and good housekeeping. It's hard for me to imagine why anybody would be opposed to that, just periodic assessment of whether the charter is meeting our current needs. You know, Councilman Bradford, very effectively, I think, reminds us, almost every time we sit down together, that the Shreveport of the 70s and 80s and 90s is gone. This city has changed quite a lot over the past four decades. And I think it's just good business sense for this body to review the charter periodically and assess whether there are changes that we should consider. What specific changes do I think we should consider? I had to, again, credit Councilman Bradford. Before I came on the council, there was an extended discussion and debate that included a request for an Attorney General's opinion about whether or not the city council should have the right to retain its own lawyer. I think Ms. Krill does an exceptional job. But I also think that the city attorney is placed in a very difficult position because of the structure of the city government, which requires her to represent the interests of the mayor, and simultaneously represent the interests of the council. You know, no lawyer can serve two masters effectively, and that's why there are such stringent rules that govern lawyers' behavior concerning conflicts. If you have two clients that have opposing interests, you can't represent them both effectively. 95% of the time, our interests and the mayor's interests are aligned, and we agree about what the city needs to do. But on occasion, the council and the mayor have different opinions. And on those occasions, I think it would be very helpful for the council to be able to retain its own lawyer. That's not an idea that I came up with. That idea has been under discussion since Mayor Glover's administration.
Mayor Hussey, basically.
No, Mayor Hussey. And thirdly, it is no secret, and I'm not trying to hide the fact, that I think there should be a discussion about, more broadly, about the structure of the city government. We have a strong mayor form of government. Is that something we want to continue, or is it not? I don't control the outcome of that. And frankly, you know, a majority of the council ultimately will make the decisions as to whether or not to allow the voters to vote on that, and then the voters would have to approve it. I don't know where that conversation is going. You know, we could form this committee, and the 15 members could say, you know, "Councilman Nicholson, this form of government has worked great for 40 years, and we're satisfied with where the city is, and we don't want to change it." Well, that'll be the end of the discussion. You know, or the committee could recommend to the council that it consider that change, and a majority of the council could say, "You know what? We disagree. We like the structure of the government." Or the council could put it to the voters in an election, and they could say, "You know what? We hear you, counsel, but we're not interested in significant changes to the structure of the government." So, you know, the process for actually changing the charter as it should be is long and convoluted, and I have no idea where that conversation goes. But I hope that we can at least agree to have that conversation. And I think that the committee that Councilman Butcher has proposed, which includes representatives from the mayor's office, the city attorney, the clerk of council, every city council member, the African-American Chamber of Commerce, the NAACP, the Committee of 100, I hope we can allow that committee to have a conversation. And if we don't like the recommendations, we don't have to take action on them as a body. Thank you.
So, let me ask you this.
Yes, sir.
If we don't pass this 32, are you saying that they can't have that conversation? Are you saying that in order for you all to call these people here together, that we got to have a resolution? And if we don't have this resolution, then that means it's null and void?
Well, Pastor, the charter allows the council, as you know, to form special committees.
Right.
And we've done that for a variety of purposes. I think if I were to, you know, caucus with Councilman Butcher and others, and we were to just propose charter amendments, the response would be, you know, "Hold up. Before you propose something this significant, you need to get community input." So this is just the best way that I knew how, that we knew how, to request the community's input on this issue.
So if I could come up with a solution that would take care of what you and Councilman Butcher is acting for, would you all accept it?
Well, I'd be delighted to hear whatever suggestions.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Would you form a committee to take care of this, that they're acting for, would you call a meeting with everybody listed on here, that these two council members could come together with them, with what they see wrong with the charter, and talk to them, and then bring it back to us as to what they found?
Yeah, I'd be...
He said he'll do that.
Well, Pastor, if we don't, if the majority of the council does not want to form a special committee, then the council should vote it down, and we'll look for alternatives. But I would like to...
But I'm just saying, you said that you're a lawyer, and lawyer, it was a contract, because it's a meeting of the mind. So I ask you, if we could come up with a solution, because what's this doing in the black community is not real nice. Where you sit is nice. Where I sit, it's racism covered with roses. So if we could just get that out of the way, then it'll make a difference. So by you having the good of the city in mind, and you want everything to work well, if we could just, for right now, have some peace in the city without the folk in my community looking at this as when the numbers change, then we look for ways to change the rules. Because we understand in America, there's two things, and, you know, we take, Donald Trump gets a lot of credit about it, but it's two things that rule America, that's money and power. And so therefore, the folk, all the folk in Washington, they see that their time is almost up, so they got to figure out other rules so that they can stay in power. So therefore, we understand that we need a city manager. We don't need a mayor, because at this point in time, we just had Councilman Bradford, and he's been getting so many accolades as to everything. So we're about 60%, Mr. Kref said. So it doesn't seem as though there will be, other than an African-American sitting over there, there won't be anyone else sitting over there from this point in time, because the rules have changed. And then, not only that, if we are not careful, instead of, as they design in this charter, that it would be 4-3, then we are looking to have 5-2. So that makes a lot of people nervous. And I just think that we ought to have a real conversation about everything. We ought to talk, real talk, and say, "Look, there are people that's nervous, and we got to figure out a way to deal with this." And then, once we can be real talk, and then when you look at the African-American community, we are nice people. We raise people, children. African-American people are just wonderful folk, and we don't have to be afraid. But we look at this as fear. It's four up here now. It's like, for an instance, at one time, we was looking at Councilman Fuller as the swing vote. So why don't we just wine and dine her, so that we could always get her vote? And so, but then there's a nervousness in the community, Councilman Flurry, that, "Well, what if those four get together?" Then we all nervous as to, what's going to happen? This is just real talk. This ain't, this is not just something that I read in the newspaper. This is real talk. And I just think if we would be real, and say, "Okay, let's just have a real..." Councilman Bradford always asks, he was asking Ken just a minute ago, "What's the climate in Shreveport?" What the climate is, we're on a powder keg. The climate is, there's been racism, but we've had it covered. But once Donald Trump became president, it's all out now. So therefore, everybody's scared, everybody's mad, everybody's nervous.
Right.
So therefore, when you see legislations like this, then it just kind of arouls a lot of emotions. And I just think that if we could do this without putting it on the agenda, voting on it, and all that kind of business, it would make a difference. And I just think that we need to just kind of uncloud the climate, and it'll make a difference in our city. And I just think that if we do that, and here again, Mr. Chairman, you have the authority to appoint committees. And since we have this list of folk, because when I look at, said, "Okay, well, we couldn't get it one way. Why don't we do this? Why don't we put, yeah, let's put somebody in NAACP, yeah, they're like this, they're like Lord Trump, let's do this," and then we got it. That ain't how you do business. You just be straight up. Since I've been on this council, there's not an individual up here that can say that I have hoodwinked you or was not straight.
That's right.
And I'm not saying anybody else has.
That's right.
But I just think we ought to have some real talk. Councilman Bradford has been trying, from different other speakers that have come, he's been asking them, the racial... been asking them, the racial whatever committee, he's been asking them, "What's the climate?" Well, the true climate is, we are on a powder keg. And until we up here, the seven of us, can let the public see us together with real, taking care of real business, yeah, we can talk about the mayor, we can say the mayor's doing this, then the other. Sometimes, I get mad as hell with him, but I mean, I just pass that on. He'd be good, 'cause he's my mayor. And I've gotten mad as hell with the other folk that was up here too, not just him. I was here with Bo Williams, I was here with Keith, Councilman Flurry. I didn't like everything they did, but because they were the mayor, the Bible said, "Give honor to whom honor is due."
That's right.
And I just think that's what we ought to do, with the same thing with him, and let's just have some real talk. So, back to what I asked before. Can we do, will we do this without number thirty-two being voted up or down? And Mr. Councilman Flurry, Mr. Chairman, I would ask that, if you would, appoint a committee that these two wonderful council members have already selected, we don't have to go find anybody, they've already said all the people need to come to the party.
Yes.
And let's just let them come to the party, and then we can roll on.
Okay.
So you're saying, Councilman, just, just where I understand, Beltrick and Springfield talking?
Yes.
You think we're going around by Laura's house to get, if we just want to just go straight?
Just straight. Let's just go straight, instead of going all the way around-
By Laura's house.
By Laura's house.
Yep.
And let's just be straight. And I think if we just do this old country saying, you from the city, well, you wouldn't understand that. That's just, that's just us country people. And I just think if we just go straight, it'll make a difference.
Well, let me, and I've said this all along, I've said this in open meetings, private meetings, you and I come from different walks. I have no idea where you came from, you have no idea where I came from, but I can tell you what's in my heart, and my heart is to make Shreveport a better place. I actually, you may be shocked that I disagree, and John and I really hadn't talked about this, I disagree with Councilman Nicholson on one thing. I think the CAO is the city manager, the way I read the charter, and the way people have told me the charter is, the CAO is the city manager. So, you know, those are all discussions that we can have at a later time. I just want to have a discussion about the charter, regardless of what we're doing. And I think that sometimes-
So going by Laura's house, will you be with me to say to the chairman, Mr. Chairman, would you call a meeting with all of these folk, let all us come to the table, talk as long as we need to talk?
I'll tell you what, let's do this. I will, I will, I will pull this right now.
Yes, sir.
Let's, you, myself, and Councilman Nicholson wants to be involved, and the chairman-
You want to be involved?
Yes, sir.
If we would, if we, if you want to sit down and talk about it, and let's come up, I want to, I want a plan of how we're gonna do this.
Yes, sir.
Because, because I think that the, you know, we were gonna let the clerk run this, I want a plan of how this is gonna be, and if we're gonna, if we're gonna do the same thing, and we're gonna get the same result, then I don't have a problem with it.
All right. I'm with you. We won't go to Laura's house, but we'll go to somebody's house.
Yeah, we'll go to Nick's.
Pastor Bowman, will you all yield, do you mind?
You mind yielding, Vice Chair?
I'm about to bust out my seat.
Okay, me too.
There's a lot, a lot, a lot of mess and lies and bull crap.
I just want to-
All right, well, Bradford's next up. Let's go down the list here.
Are you into the Vice Chair?
I appreciate it. I'm picking up everything you're putting down, Councilman Green. I respect everything about what you're saying and what you're trying to do, but I'm calling shenanigans on it, because I'm gonna say this, it's a distraction. We may need a charter review, and I've said this at once to my colleague, and I'll say it here, if it's not the will of the people coming in here and telling us to do it, we are wasting time. We had, we had Councilman Bradford, Councilman Bowman, both ripped the skin off of Mr. Green today from property standards, and then a little bit to Allen Clark. People are calling us every day about potholes, property standards, houses burned up, economic development. If we're gonna put a committee together officially or unofficially of all these people listed here, it needs to be about something people are actually asking us for.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right, then, let's go, Councilman Bradford.
Let me first state, Mr. Chairman, and I want to speak on this, but I'm gonna ask that we suspend the rules and bring forth the check from Willis Knight in early, so we can get that check before it-
Before they change their minds.
So, I, I, I was down at the office of my administration today, and they got this big check made up for a little over forty-eight thousand dollars, and Representative Willis Knight is gonna appear. I want to get, get that out the way, okay? But let me just say this regarding, I appreciate the conversation. I thought it was good, healthy conversation.
Thank you.
But I want to say that, you know, again, I say this cliche all the time, that we see things, not as they are, we see things as we are. I mean, the councilmen have already conceded the yields, in fact, he gonna pull legislation and let, let approach it a different way, whereas I encourage and support the conversation of a citizens review committee, because things change, okay? But the safeguards are in place. I mean, the anxiety that I've heard is that, now that, now that it appears that African American mayors gonna prevail for foreseeable future, we want to circumvent his authority by shuffling the deck in regards to the power of the mayor, okay? I don't know if that the motivation or not, but that's neither here or there. I think that there are certain aspects of the charter, just, just as, just as the elected body of this city, we will be prudent to do. It happens in other places. But I think the safeguards are that, I looked at the makeup of the committee, and it seemed to be a balanced, a balanced committee. Then, then I see the council, and Councilman Nicholson pointed out very clearly that if, and I think, I think that, again, I'm not gonna hash, but the vote would, would bring some, bring some, some authorization to it, okay? But, but, but if this body doesn't see where that, that committee's recommendation would be warranted, then we have the ability to modify those recommendations or-
Or reject them.
Or reject them altogether. And then, if we take them to the voters, and this is the key, you know, I mean, we talking race, and we'll talk race, I can talk race with anybody. If the majority of the voters are African-American, and they feel like the charter is not in the interest of the future, then the majority of the voters will reject it. So I'm just saying that there are safeguards in place, but I think the compromise of happening, but I, but in the climate that we're in, we need a diversity of our citizens conversating. I think that'll be a healthy thing to do, okay? So, but I think with the councilman agreeing to yield, would you agree to review the aspects of how you can, as, as a chairman, conform or configure a, a committee that would serve the same purpose? We may still come up with the same results. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Chairman.
So, Mr. Thompson, how do we proceed? Councilman Butcher said that he would be willing to pull it, and Councilman Flurry would organize the committee. So how do we proceed on that?
Well, I, I, are you gonna do it tomorrow?
Yeah, I'll move to, I'll move, or to remove it.
I think tomorrow, that, you know, he's the author of it.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Councilman Butcher.
It has to be voted on, but, but he can make-
As the chair recognizes, Councilman Jerry Bowman, Jr.
I'm gonna go ahead and yield, and I appreciate Councilman Fuller for her statement that she made. I will add my two cents tomorrow, but I just see that thing, just, we got, we got a lot of-
A lot of work to do up here. Let me say that, we got a whole lot of work to do. We talk about the, the city attorney, where I thought we, that's what we got Ms. Thia up here for, was to help out on the council side, and every time we don't agree with something that our city attorney say, then we want to get an opinion from, from somebody to, to, to go off of, because we don't agree with what she's saying. I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't agree with that at all, and I, before I get too upset and say something that I don't want to say, I'll just yield to tomorrow. We'll leave it at that.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, Mr. Jones?
Mr. Chairman, unrelated to our discussion, which we just had, I'm gonna move to withdraw Resolution Seven tomorrow. Last Friday, the State Board of Commerce and Industry made a significant change to the industrial tax exemption program by giving applicants an appeal of right from local entities that reject the tax exemption. I think that change merits further discussion regarding the standards we want to put in place before I ask the council to take action on that legislation. And Resolution Twenty-seven asks the council to approve hiring several law firms to handle litigation relating to bond fixing on, on a contingent fee basis. I'm gonna offer a slight amendment that I think is a clarification, that makes clear that no law firm representing the city on a contingent fee basis is gonna get a contingency fee on a payment the city receives as a class member. Okay, so there's a lawsuit in New York that's already been settled, the class has already been certified, and getting that money just takes filling out a two-page form. That's all there is to it. So I don't think any lawyer or anybody else involved intends to take a contingent fee on money that we get paid by just filing a two-page form in the federal lawsuit in New York, but I want to make that clear before we vote on it. So I will offer an amendment to that effect. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, can I, so, just to be clear, this, we weren't gonna receive this funds if it were not for the attorneys. We had no idea of-
So-
Go ahead.
Oh, excuse me, ma'am.
Yeah, no, we, we were not gonna receive these funds if it were not for these attorneys that brought this to us. That's where this contingency fee comes into play. This, this isn't funds that were already there that we were about to receive, and somebody jumped in the middle and said, "Hey, I want a piece of it." These were funds that we were unaware of, they brought this to us, said that we qualified, and that's where the contingency fee comes in, because these were funds that were, we had no idea about it. Go ahead.
Well, I do understand that many municipalities and other class members didn't know about the pending class action lawsuit. My understanding from talking to your city attorney and others is that there's a piece of this that we're gonna get just by filing a two-page form, and that, that piece, that form is due this Friday, and I'm suggesting to you, and I've practiced law fifteen years, I don't think anybody should get a contingent fee for helping any person or entity fill out a two-page form. There's another piece of it that the lawyers that you have proposed we retain are gonna litigate. They're gonna get a contingent fee on that part.
Yeah, I haven't, so, two, two parts with it. The two-page document, I think you're looking at the wrong service that they're providing. They're not providing a service of filling out two pieces of paper, they're providing a service of actually us receiving that revenue, because we had no idea about the revenue. So that's the service. It's not, it's not somebody saying, "Hey, I see you're getting your paycheck today, let me get twenty percent of it, because I see you're getting it, and I'll fill out this." It's somebody saying, "Hey, this other entity owes you a dividend of some sort, you were gonna miss out on it, but I'm identifying it, can I get a share for being able to identify that revenue?" So they're jumping in. It's not just two pieces of paper they're filling out. The, you say the outside counsel that I recommended, I actually didn't recommend any outside counsel at all, so I want to be clear and put that on the record. I have no idea who that counsel is. If anybody can help bring in revenue to this city, I am A-OK with it, and I think that they should be compensated for them bringing in revenue to the city. That's, that's my stance on this.
Yeah, and I just, I want to be clear, I'm not suggesting that the mayor knew any of these people or directed their retaining, that's not, 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 excuse me, I did say you hired, I meant your administration. I'm not suggesting that you handpicked these people, I don't think that, okay? But I am, I am saying again that lawyers don't take contingent fees on class payments. That, I mean, that is not normal business, and I'm not trying to argue with you, mayor, I'm just giving you my perspective as somebody who happens to be an attorney, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna offer that amendment, and if it's voted down, I, I'm, it's not gonna hurt my feelings, but that's what I intended to do.
I think, I mean, I think this is a place where we can have a productive conversation. I would like to hear from council on what you all would, like, how do we compensate people that let us know that there's revenue out there for us to be receiving that we had no clue about? I think there should be some consideration paid to them, but like I said, I'm very open to council on how we present that to attorneys, or anybody who can bring us revenue.
Well, they go to pen and drop, nobody's saying that. So, that's why we're getting sued right now, because nobody wanted to reach out to the people and pay for them, asking for some money because they found a problem with the water bill, which I know I ain't supposed to talk about this, so I'm gonna leave that alone. But that's one reason we're getting sued right now, because we're in a offer of dying. So, let me say that. Now, Nicholson, you also was, you used to get, you used to get paid from the city, well, you did city work at one time as a, as an attorney, and I don't, I don't think you turned down a dime that they owed you, knowing that time now.
You know-
I'm just making a statement, I'm not arguing, I don't want to discuss about it.
I'll have to stay in the back when you're done.
Okay, I'm done.
Okay. I was paid a hundred and twenty-five dollars, and I represent the city.
And you didn't get none of it back.
And you are, you are welcome to review my billings with every other law firm on that case and see how they compare. And I, you know, I, I hope we can have productive discussions without personal attacks, but we failed-
I'm not attacking, I'm just using, I'm just using as a sample.
I didn't take a contingent fee on a class payment, I'll say that.
But you didn't get back none of the money that was offered to you either.
Okay, let's move on. CAO, you through?
One thing, Resolution Eleven, this is the agreement between Pratt Paper, the city, and Republic, and this is one that we're at the finish line with, and we just want a little bit more time to wrap it up.
So you're gonna postpone that?
We're going to ask the council to postpone it, yes, sir.
Okay, all right. All right, any, Ms. Jones, let's go ahead with the introduction of resolutions.
Resolution Thirty-three, granting a variance from certain provisions of Chapter Thirty-four of the Code of Ordinances relative to flood hazard prevention. Resolution Thirty-four is authorizing the mayor to execute an acceptance of active donation between Shreveport and WIVI Land Development LLC, hereafter called Owner, for the water and sewer main extensions and related facilities to serve Lucian Field Estates Phase Two Units A and B. Resolution Thirty-five, authorizing the mayor to execute an acceptance of active donation between Shreveport and WIVI Land Development LLC for the water and sewer main extensions and related facilities to serve Lucian Field Estates Phase Two Units C and D. Resolution Thirty-six, authorizing the mayor to execute an acceptance of active donation between Shreveport and Providence Development Company LLC, hereafter called Owner, for the water and sewer main extensions and related facilities to serve Providence Phase Two Unit G. Resolution Thirty-seven, authorizing the mayor to execute an acceptance of active donation between the city of Shreveport and Providence Development Company LLC for water and sewer main extensions and related facilities to serve Providence Phase Two Unit H dash one. Resolution Thirty-eight, authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement between Shreveport and Volunteers for Youth Justice. Resolution Thirty-nine, authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement between the city of Shreveport and Historic South Highlands Neighborhood Association. Resolution Forty, authorizing the acceptance of a grant of, from the Shreveport Bossier Convention and Tourist Bureau.
Any questions? Discussion? Ms. Jones? Proceed.
Section C, introduction of ordinances. Ordinance Seventeen is amending the city of Shreveport 2020 capital projects fund budget. Resolution Eighteen is amending the 2020 Street Special Revenue Fund budget. Ordinance Twenty is revising, amending and enacting certain sections of Chapter Twenty-two and Thirty-three of Shreveport Code of Ordinances relative to fire prevention and protection fees. Ordinance Nineteen is amending the 2020 general fund budget. Ordinance Twenty-one is zoning case number nineteen dash four seventy dash C, and ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the Shreveport UDC, right by rezoning property located on the east side of Audrey Lane, approximately two thousand six hundred and sixty-five feet north of Cooper Road, Shreveport Cattle Parish, Louisiana, from R-17, single-family residential district, to R-2, multifamily residential district. Ordinance Twenty-two is zoning case number nineteen dash four seventy-nine C, and ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the Shreveport UDC, rezoning property located on the south side of Financial Plaza, approximately four hundred and fifty feet west of Raspberry Lane, Shreveport Cattle Parish, Louisiana, from C-1 Neighborhood Commercial District to C-U-C Urban Corridor Commercial District.
Okay. Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
The second one, Resolution Eighteen, that should be ordinance eighteen.
Okay.
And we'll make that change on the agenda. I don't think there's anything except a typo there.
Any questions? Ms. Jones, let's proceed with ordinance, second reading, final passage.
Ordinance Number Ten is amending the 2020 Grand Special Revenue Fund budget. Ordinance Eleven is revising Chapter Seventy-eight, Article Four, Streets, Sidewalks, and Other Public Places, Construction, Excavations of the Shreveport, Louisiana Code of Ordinances relative to construction, excavations, and bores in the city public right of way. Ordinance Twelve is adding and enacting Section Twenty-six dash twenty-five of Chapter Twenty-six Finance, Article One in general of- of the City of Shreveport Code of Ordinances relative to a chief financial officer. Ordinance Thirteen is amending the MPC's fee schedule for the Shreveport, Louisiana UDC relative to fees for neighborhood participation planning, as well as for wireless telecommunications. Ordinance Fourteen is amending the Code of Ordinances of the city of Shreveport by adding Division Eleven, Article Five of Chapter Twenty-six relative to the creation and establishing of a Shreveport City Prosecutor's Pre-Trial Diversion Program Special Revenue Fund. Ordinance Fifteen is adopting the 2020 Diversion Program Special Revenue Fund budget. Ordinance Sixteen is amending the 2020 general fund budget.
No discussion? All right, there's nothing on the table, legislation's come off. We have no property standards, or appeal fields. We have no MPC, ZBA fields tomorrow. Are there any appeals, Mr. Thompson?
No, sir.
I should've said, are there any other appeals? Excuse me.
No, sir.
Are there reports from officers, boards, and committees? Yes.
We had a very productive infrastructure meeting today. That's all I'll say about it now.
Okay, Mr. Thompson, the clerk before?
Uh, no, sir.
Okay. Executive session has been done, is there nothing else?
Mr. Chairman, I, I wanna announce that tomorrow, I've asked Ken Rogers, NLCO, to come and give us an update on some projects that is pending. One being the Thirty-one, Thirty-two extension. There's some, there's some new information on that, as well as the I-49 project through the city. As you know, at the last section before, they dismissed, Representative Bagley approved, had approved a hundred million dollar appropriation for that project. And he's gonna update us on where that is as well. And I also have, and I'm headed to the MLK community now on Ordinance Twenty-one, that housing development. The developers of that project would be here tomorrow. I asked them to come before the council to share with you that project. It came before the MPC, and that body unanimously approved the application. And I just want you to hear this very impressive development. It's just Phase One. It's gonna, I think, be a real boost in revitalizing that, that community. We talked about reinvestment, or disinvestment. There has been disinvestment in MLK area. We're gonna try to do some reinvestment, and starting with a twenty-two million dollar project, I think is, just by numbers, is a big deal. And they'll be here tomorrow to share with you on that project as well. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, our staff is working with the CAO's office on amendments to Ordinance Number Ten, Number Fifteen, and Number Sixteen. And we'll get those to you as soon as they're finalized.
County Bowman, you have anything else to add?
No, just like to keep my tea.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Tomorrow is Fat Tuesday, and Wednesday is Ash Wednesday.[1780.82]